Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. May I have a motion to appoint a clerk pro tem?
Make a motion to appoint Alan Clark Protem.
You have a second to the motion?
The second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion to appoint Mr. Slaven as clerk pro tem? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
I have no choice, yes.
And myself, it is so. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Slaven?
Roll call, selectman Ron Bessie is here, selectwoman Judith Whiteside Chair is here, selectman Alan Slaven is here. I don't see town administrator nor town council.
I'm expecting both of them, so we will note for the record when they appear.
Okay.
Pledge of allegiance, Mr. Bessie?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Residents' comments. Comments on non-agenda items shall be limited to two minutes, and there will be no more than ten minutes per meeting of residents' comments. Based on past practice, the Select Board will not respond or comment. Is there anyone, Mr. Bowen is in the audience? No, if you would let him in. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item? I see none. The record will show that Mr. Bowen arrived at seven oh one. And may I have? Can we go to announcements later? Do you want, do you have a lot of announcements, Mr. Slaven or Mr. Bessie?
No.
No.
Okay, so we'll, I have a couple. Let me just do this. Do you have any announcements, Mr. Slaven?
Just that we've all been notified of the heavy winds and potential flooding in low-riding areas. Lower Main Street is one area. I would imagine Swift Beach and like certain areas are going to have some serious flooding as well. So be prepared and be careful. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie, announcements?
I have done this evening.
Okay. The record was
Never mind, go ahead.
Mr. Sullivan joined the meeting at seven oh one as well. I have a couple of announcements. If you have storm drains near your house, you might want to think about clearing them, making sure that they are in fact working. Dog licenses are available. You must license your dog before the end of this month. You got your census request in the mail, and that should be returned in the first ten days of the month. So I suggested you get them back to town clerk by Monday at the latest, please. You also got your tax bills, and those are, of course, due at a different time. I would point out that the Y is beginning its open table program this weekend. And you can see that on Facebook, different media announcements about a lot of the programs that we have in Wareham for free meals, whether they are daily meals, whether they're pickup meals, whether they're grocery meals, that kind of thing. So thank you, Wareham, for supporting all of the residents. Ms. Dunham and Ms. Smith, would you raise your hands, please?
Before, before we go there, I've just making out the burn permits of the fire department are now available.
Oh. For both fire departments?
It should be both.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. I'd like to jump to item eight J, discussion and possible vote to reaffirm the relationship with Wareham, with Wareham, United Kingdom as a twin city. I've asked Ms. Claire Smith to join us, as well as Angela Dunham to join us. Ms. Smith was previously an ambassador to the town of Wareham in two thousand, I'm not sure when. And Ms. Dunham went to Japan as well, and both of them were named as ambassadors for this town. In nineteen ninety-eight, the then Board of Selectmen twinned with the city of Wareham, England. I think I sent you a copy of that declaration. But Ms. Smith is the one who had asked that this be put back on the agenda. So I would ask Ms. Smith to identify yourself for the record and let us know why you would like us to think about doing this before we vote on it. I would also ask Ms. Dunham to weigh in on the concept of twinning or sister cities. Good evening.
Good evening. Happy New Year to all of you. As you know, a couple of years ago, Holly and I went over to Wareham, England. I recently received a request from the town choir. When we were over there, we had the pleasure of going through their chambers. And hanging in the chambers is this proclamation cordially inviting the residents of Wareham, England to visit Wareham, Massachusetts. There's really been nothing formal done to make that happen. Wareham, England actually has a committee, a twinning committee that reaches out, and they also are twinned with France and Germany. So they exchange visitors every other year. And they have a committee of people who like to travel, who have an interest in visiting other places. And so the town choir asked if I would bring this back to your board to see if maybe we could reactivate and generate some interest in visiting with them and set up a reactivation of this twinning. They have a formal process that they've used. Basically, they have a committee that gets together quite often, and if they know that they have visitors coming, they will plan activities. They also do a little fundraising, so if they want to entertain them, you know, maybe with coffee and Dorset cake or something in the chambers, that they have a way to do that. So I did tell the town choir that I would be happy to do this, and that's why I'm here tonight, to bring that to your attention, to see whether the town wants to reactivate that formal agreement of twinning. And I do know that there are a couple of residents from Wareham, England who would like to come over here. And so I said to them, I'd be happy to bring it to your attention and see what we could do.
Thank you. Ms. Dunn, can you weigh in on twinning and being an ambassador to a foreign country as well?
Love to. I absolutely support this. Oh, I'm sorry, Angela Dunham, Wareham Historical Society president. I absolutely support this idea. I grew up in a home where my mother communicated letter-writing primarily, of course, back in the day to all of her relatives who had left Madeira, Portugal, and immigrated to other countries. And I actually have family in seven different countries. I communicate with those folks, most of them, not all of them. And because of that, I have more of a global interest in communicating with other countries perhaps than some people that didn't grow up with that interaction with other countries and customs and traditions. I think this is a wonderful idea, Claire. And I still keep in touch with my friends from Japan. I was recently invited to attend a summit in Japan, as a matter of fact, by Dr. Matthew Perry. I have partnered with Claire in the past, having the folks from Wareham, England doing a program for us at the Wareham Historical Society's meeting house and have sent gifts from the Wareham Historical Society when Claire went to England. So I applaud you, Claire, for pursuing this, and I wish you all the best. If there's anything at all that we can provide for you in this objective from the Wareham Historical Society, just let me know.
Thank you. Do either Mr. Bess, Mr. Bessie, you have a question or a comment, sir?
Yeah, so I guess my, the biggest question that I have is what? What's the process that would need to be gone through in order to make something like this happen?
Basically, for the twinning, Jenky had asked if perhaps our chairman of the board might reach out to the town clerk over there and work with, with their group. So what you would do is you would need to find host families that would be interested if somebody wanted to come over here. And they would be matched up with people and families that have like interest and almost like a setup like a pen pal situation where, okay, you know, you're going to be going over there a year from now. You would be put in contact with somebody in Wareham, England, and write back and forth, you know, what would you like to do? What's your interest? Where would, what would you like to see? That kind of thing. So it's just a friendship type thing, but you would host them in your home, and they would host any visitors from here in their home as well.
Almost like, almost like a foreign exchange student program?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I mean, it, it sounds like, it sounds like a great idea. You know, but I guess the biggest thing would just be getting, you know, people over here on board to be willing to do something like that. And I'm sure we've got, you know, plenty of people here in town that would be interested in something like that, but it's just a matter of getting it set up. So I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. I've always been a fan of the the multi-country kind of things. I've had, when I grew up, I had a lot of friends that hosted exchange students. So I always, I got to meet a lot of different races, nationalities. It was pretty cool. I mean, something I think I would definitely be interested in looking into if the, if it made sense for, for my family, but definitely something that I think is really interesting, and I would support it a hundred percent.
Thanks. Mr. Slaven?
I look at this a little bit differently. Because for the town, you know, you can't have a town committee per se that has to have some funding. This really falls right into the lap of the Wareham Historical Society. It's perfect for them. They are a nonprofit. They have funds. They can raise funds. And they're really at the base of trying to do this. They've already got, you know, fifty percent interest through Japan. And I think it'd just be much easier if we take the two areas and just run right through the historical society. The town will support it, obviously, but I think because of logistics and some of the financial pieces and everything else will make life real simple.
I think that you have to have the town do the agreement, but I will. I, I hear what you're saying, and I know that previously, Mr. Sullivan had the dollar signs flashing across his eyes. And that was an issue that, that he had raised. Mr. Sullivan, do you want to weigh in? Or not?
He's muted.
We know that the wind is interfering with some of the transmissions, so we'll be. Go ahead, Mr. Sullivan.
No, I don't. I wasn't ready for the sort of discussion. So if you're asking if I have an appropriation, no, we didn't.
No, I know you don't. Yeah. Okay. Ms. Dunham?
I, I just wanted to say that I, I know that there was a concern when I returned from Japan. And the town was very kind and generous in allowing me to take letters of friendship and letters and drawings, poems and such, from the Wareham school system. They did pay for my fare going there and coming home and for three days of my seven-day stay. However, I don't know that this particular situation would involve any kind of financial obligation outside of what Mrs. Smith just talked about pairing people up like a foreign exchange situation where they would stay. I know that Dr. Matthew Perry continues to travel back and forth to Japan, and he stays with Japanese families. If Claire could look into what kind of financial obligation this would entail, perhaps we could then make a better decision about that. But I know that the financial aspect of it is a concern, but this might not be that kind of an obligation. This might be a different, more informal exchange, which I would support, of course.
I think Angela's right. It, it's not something that the town would fund. You would put together a committee and maybe just have a little fundraiser or something so that if people came over to visit, you wanted to take them, say, to Plymouth, to see Plymouth Rock, or you wanted to visit somewhere locally, show them something local. You might want to hire a little van or something to go. It would be minimum. So it would be up to the committee to raise the funds, and I know in Wareham, UK, the committee itself is the one that does the raising of the funds. And the host families, I know when we were over there, the host family really, I mean, they lined us and dined us and didn't expect us to pay for anything, although as, as much as we would offer, you know, they would say, no, it's our pleasure. So I think it's, it's generally, you know, a kindness to another, you know, people from another country that want to come here. They want to visit. They want to see what our country's like. It's just a goodwill type thing. You know, there's nothing really other than if Mr. Sullivan wanted to have them for cake and coffee, he might have to pay for a cake. So it's not a deal where you would have to come up with thousands of dollars or a budget or anything. Just, you know, you want to maybe give them a little trinket. Like we gave them the challenge coins. We had the challenge coins, which, you know, we would manage to get, just little things like that. And I think if you put together a committee, certainly the committee could have a supper or something and raise a couple hundred dollars to do something. So, and they only come every other year, so it's not a big, big budget.
You had me at cake, Claire.
Yeah. I I'm, I support the idea. I think most of you know, tho, those of you who know me well, know that my parents during World War Two actually hosted two young men from London during the Blitz. They lived with my parents for six years. The dad was an RAF pilot, fighter pilot, who lived. And when I was sixteen, I spent a summer in England, living with them as their daughter, basically. And learned how to be, you know, kind of English. It was, it was, it was fascinating. And my parents kept in touch with the boys, I called them boys, forever. I always considered them my older brothers that I had never met until I met them when I went to England. So I think it's a great idea. I, I'm not sure I want to create a committee right now, but maybe Claire and Angie and I and maybe Ron or, you know, we can, we can have coffee someplace and figure out the details of how this would work out. I think that would be a better way of doing it. I'm all in favor of having the town write another proclamation as we did in nineteen ninety-eight, which just, you know, says the stuff that it says. So I think, I think that's the way I would prefer to go, and I know that Mr. Sullivan with the governor's latest slam at funding anything in towns, you know, from the state is, we just don't have money, even if it's for cake and coffee. Mr. Slaven?
Again, I look at this, you know, financially always for, you know, effect of the town. And what we're talking about is a committee, but it's not a town committee. So again, you know, it makes a lot of sense when you already have a five oh one C three set up with the historical society. They've done this work before. It's nothing special, but it makes it easier. You know, the town, obviously, if they're asked to put a proclamation together, whatever, what's agreed for twinning, we can vote on that. But when we talk about a committee, it's not part of the town. So why make life more difficult for everybody? Everything is already in place.
Okay, so would you make a motion to write the proclamation to indicate the desire to, to twin with Wareham, England? Understanding that there would not be a town committee. There would be a committee of interested people.
Motion so made.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
And is there any further discussion on the motion? Ms. Dunham, do you have your hand up?
I, I do. Only to be, to say that I'd be happy to set up a committee through the Wareham Historical Society for this. I think any of this cultural enrichment would be to our benefit.
Okay, thank you. I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes, thank you.
And myself, yes, and thank you very much, ladies. I look forward to, I'll, I can put together a proclamation and get that, and I'd be happy to talk with you, Claire and Angie, excuse me, Ms. Smith and Ms. Dunham, about contacting who and, you know, moving forward. Thank you very much, ladies, and enjoy the evening, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to all of you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you very much. Mr. Slaven, we have no appointments or interviews. May I have a motion on item seven A, please? Which is the application from National Marine Life Center for the annual polar plunge on February fourth?
Uh, make a motion, we approve the application from the National Marine Life Center on the annual polar plunge for February fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. I assume the polar plunge is probably an onset?
Yes, it is. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion to okay the application? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Slaven, I will go for the Wareham, Wareham Garden Club, please?
Okay. Next, we have an application from the Wareham Garden Club, Carepita Leboilier, to place signs on town property for the Wareham Garden Club Spring Sale.
Second.
That was probably in March or April, I think.
Yeah, the application is in your packet, and it's all set, and they have not asked for signs anyplace that they're not allowed to have them.
Yeah, they, they know how to do it.
Yeah, they do. A motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is Saturday, May eleventh, for the record.
Oh, sorry.
Moving on to eight A, discussion and possible vote regarding cannabis regulations. Mr. Slaven has an update.
Simple. No movement from the state yet.
Thank you. So we, I'll just keep putting it back on the agenda until we have. Yeah.
Oh, that's all we can do.
Okay. We do not have a full board this evening, so we're going to skip over B, the liaison assignments. We're going to skip over a select board member to the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust. We do not have the presentation by Mr. Varity on the conservation restriction that has been postponed at their request until the twenty-third. So Mr. Slaven, I'll accept a motion on D, which is the holding, pocketing the barnacle Bob's license for a period of time.
I think we're, we've been, if we have a discussion first, and that discussion is, we're already holding the license for the particular piece of property, stuff for the liquor license. Gentlemen's been trying to sell the property as we did with the sports buyer for Steven Belanger over an onset. So I guess the question for the board is, how much longer do we want to hold this?
He came to us, I'll remind you, that he came to us in maybe October and told us that he was going to close. The only date he wanted to remain open was the December fourteenth Christmas party that he had already scheduled, and we allowed him to do that. So he's been closed for for three or four months. Mr. Bessie, Mr.?
So, so I, I, I have some, some questions on this. So officially, he's been closed since October. But I've questioned the operating of the establishment since we granted them their liquor license back in, I think it was like April, May, and then they asked for an extension to open up. But they really weren't open that much this summer. So I would, I would say if we're going to hold this license, we need to take all of that into consideration into the amount of time that we'd be willing to keep this license on hold. Because in my opinion, essentially, the license has been held for almost, you know, going to be, you know, the, the better part of almost a year based on the fact of the amount of operating time. So I think I'd be willing to hold it, but I think the timeline has to be not quite as long as some of the other establishments that were closed and properly and opened, you know, when they were supposed to be. So that would be my only, my only comments on that, is just taking that amount of time into consideration.
With June thirtieth, June thirtieth, work for you, Ron?
Yeah, I would take that as a, as a start time.
As a
As a, well, so yeah, so I would say June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. As a stop time for holding the license. I would agree with that.
All right, I'll make a motion for Barnacle Bills, Inc., DBA, BB's, twenty twenty, twenty-four, twenty-four, Cranberry Highway, Wareham, for the liquor license that is being held, to be held to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'm going to ask for a second, and then I will recognize Mr. Bowen, Mr. Bessie.
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Bowen, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The action that you are considering is disciplinary in nature. And it's typical when you take an action that is disciplinary in nature to hold a hearing before taking the act, which would include presentation of evidence, an opportunity for the object of the action to address you, and certainly giving them at least two weeks' advanced notice of the time, place, and date, and the charges. So. One more. Madam Chair, Rich, I think there's, that's very, it's an establishment that sounds very similar to another establishment. This is BB's. That's by, over towards the Crossing Neck of the Woods.
Yeah, this is near Wareham Crossing. They asked to be allowed to be closed in, I, I believe it was October, and he came before us, and he asked that we allow him to, you know, apply for the license, but understand that he is trying to sell the location. This is not the one that you and I have been talking about, okay? So this is not a disciplinary action. This is a request of the owner.
I respectfully beg to differ.
Okay.
The owner isn't in front of you tonight, asking that you set a date of June thirtieth or any other date. I think anytime you impose conditions of the sort that you're discussing, it is a disciplinary hearing. And I think really you have two courses of action available to you. One is, excuse me, one is to invite the person in before you for an informational meeting. So they have an opportunity to come in and tell you what's up. And at the conclusion of that informational meeting, you can decide whether that party would be willing to agree to certain stipulations. And if they weren't willing to agree, you at that point could go forward to a regular disciplinary hearing, which would involve the formal imposition of conditions. But just imposing conditions on someone without having them given it, without having given them advanced notice of what you propose or the opportunity to come before you to speak about it is a recipe for trouble.
Okay, so let me ask you this question. It would be an informational meeting. Could we have it on the twenty-third? It's not going to be a, that would be an informational.
It's not a
It's not a disciplinary hearing. It would be an informational hearing only.
You're, you're sending this, you're sending this person a letter saying, on time, date, and place, come before the Board of Selectmen, we're going to have an agenda item, and we expect you to present what your plans are. And based on the outcome of that meeting, we may or may not take some further action to be, yet to be determined.
So I need to give him two weeks?
Well, no, for an informational meeting, no.
Okay, so I could ask, I could send him a letter and invite him to be in front of us on the twenty-third, which is our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, before I remove my motion, which I actually do, I would suggest that that's another possibility, because I actually ran into Tim about a week or so ago, and I asked him exactly what's going on. He said he's still trying to sell. So what if we simply vote today? It's not an action per se to do anything with the license, but it's to bring this back on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four and see where the situation is. We're not closing him down. We're not taking his license away. We're just saying that on that particular date, we want to basically come back and discuss where it's at. And if there's a problem, then we go through the actual procedure that Rich has suggested we do, which I agree with.
Okay, so I ask you to withdraw your motion, then?
Which I do.
Mr. Bessie, would you withdraw your second?
I'll withdraw my second, but I have some further comment.
Yes, please.
So so currently, so the license that he has runs through, does it run through two thousand and twenty-four? Was it, was it renewed?
It was reissued.
So, so here's my, so here's my concern with what you're proposing, Alan, is that if we do this, we're kind of setting precedent for any other business in the future that doesn't want to stay open, whether it be for financial reasons, whatever it might be, to come to us to ask, hey, can we close down even though we know that we're supposed to be open with our license? Because we don't know what we want to do with our business. Do we really want to start opening up? If you want to call it Pandora's Box and allowing other businesses in the future to do the same thing, where we could potentially have you know, two, three, four, five licenses at one time just being held. Um, that would be my only concern and tha- that's why I think, you know, Rich's recommendation to have an informational and on the twenty-third to find out what the plans are and then you know, maybe make a mutual decision uh on that license rather than just saying, hey, why don't we just push this off until June thirtieth and then have a discussion? I think the discussion should happen now that we can at least start to have a plan in mind of what is going to happen so that we don't put ourselves in a situation where we have to uh oblige to every business that wants to close for any given reason.
Okay, that sounds good.
Let me go back again. Uh, sorry. The problem is Pandora's Box has been opened. We've done this twice before now.
But we did have those individuals in and asked us, they were present at the discussions.
I think the sports bar one sent a letter and asked it, but it did not come before us. Um, I will do whichever way you want, but I'm saying we've already done this before. I'm just trying to find a simple way to do this to make life easy.
I'm gonna take Mr. Bowen's suggestion. I'm going to ask the gentleman to in be in front of us for an informational meeting on the twenty-third of this month.
Okay.
Okay. And I will work with Mr. Bowen to make sure that I use the right terminology for putting it on the agenda. Thank you. Okay, next, um, we have a discussion, a possible vote to accept a gift from Wareham Pediatrics. May I have a motion, please?
Hey, we have uh item E and item F of both gifts. The first one is to accept the cash donation amount of eighty-nine dollars from Wareham Pediatrics to the Wareham Free Library.
Second.
Motion made in second and to accept a gift. Is there a sec, is there any further discussion on that motion? Mr. Bessie, can you take your hand down, please? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes, nice.
Yes, thank you. Next, Mr. Slavin.
Okay, next we have a donation from an anonymous donor for one thousand dollars to the Wareham Free Library.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the gift to the Wareham Free Library. Any further discussion on the motion? None, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Discussion and possible vote to hold a special election to fill the select board vacancy. I have conferred with town council, I've conferred with town clerk. And an election at this point to fill a vacancy on the select board would cost anywhere between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars. There would have to be a sixty-four day uh lead time, and that brings us very close to the annual election on May seventh anyway. Um, I'm not convinced that that's a good use of twenty thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars. We also have, as you know, some vacancies in the clerk's office and this is it, it, it's an enormous amount of work to get this done anyway, as you can tell from the fifteenth, fifteen to twenty thousand dollar price tag. I'll accept a motion.
Accept the motion that we continue with the fourth selectman in place, do not hold a special election for uh the open spot that we have.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Motion made in second and to not hold a special election. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Um, next we have the annual contract between the town of Wareham and the Lakeville Animal Shelter. We sign this contract every year. Unfortunately, when we um take dogs and we've had to do that several times this year, uh, we don't have any place to put them except with Wareham, with the Lakeville Animal Shelter and the contract has been in front of you. Um, there's, there's an annual fee of two hundred and fifty dollars and the daily boarding fee is twenty-five dollars. And so you've, you've had the contract in your packet. I would ask for a motion to authorize the chair to sign it. I think it's just the chair. Nope, it's all of us. Motion, yeah, motion to approve it, please.
I have no questions. Ron, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, we'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the twenty twenty-four contract between the town of Wareham and the Lakeville Animal Shelter.
There's a second, okay. It's actually, yeah, it's for the Lakeville Animal Shelter. It's, it's, the contract is between the Lakeville Select Board and the Wareham Select Board, but that's Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we, we have kind of a scribbler's error in the actual.
Yeah, there's a scribbler's error there, but the, the contractor clearly calls for select board con, the contract, yeah.
So we have to change the motion to say the town of Lakeville?
Yes.
In the Lake Animal Shelter?
Yes, on behalf of the Lake, yeah.
I'll make that modification. Ron has to.
A second.
Second, thank you.
Any further discussion on that amended motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We did K, um, no, we did J. K, discussion and possible vote to approve the Southern Plymouth County Public Health Excellence Collaborative Intermunicipal Agreement for the Public Health Excellence for Shared Services Grant. You had the information in your packet. Mr. Sullivan, do you want to add anything to that?
No, we're already, we're already a part of that. So I think this is just a re-upping of it and it's uh, there, there's no additional really cost from us on it.
Correct. I'll accept a motion.
Yes, I move that we basically continue our project with the Southern Plymouth County Public Health Excellence Collaboration Intermunicipal Agreement known as IMA for the Public Health Excellence for Shared Services Grant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to um approve the ongoing commitment. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, the next is discussion and possible vote to approve the process for calling a town meeting for the twenty twenty-four Annual Spring Town Meeting. You have in your packet the process. And unless Mr. Bessie wants to volunteer, Mr. Slavin told me that I had to do it. Do you want to read it, Mr. Bessie, or do you want me to?
Um, I can read it, I just have to find it in the packet.
Can you do it really fast? Can you do it Peter Titlebomb fast?
No, I'm not that fast. He's an attorney.
Yeah, they're good with words.
Yeah.
Do you have it or do you want me to?
No, I'm, I'm just scrolling. I just have to find the page. I think it's
Way at the end.
Madam Chairman, move to adopt as printed in the packet.
Oh.
So moved.
Okay, I like that. Um, motion made in seconded to adopt as printed. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes, my question would be, even though it's in the packet, uh, the public who's hearing this has not heard the dates or anything.
Okay, the dates to open the, the town meeting is going to be held on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. The town election is May seventh, twenty twenty-four. The warrant for the town meeting will open on February sixteenth and will close on February twenty-seventh. The warrant. Okay? And this will be posted on the town website tomorrow. And those are the dates, April twenty-second, May seventh. Warrant opens February sixteenth and closes February twenty-seventh.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the process of calling a town meeting for the twenty twenty-four Annual Spring Town Meeting with what's on the agenda and also what was discussed just now.
There's second, okay, motion made and seconded to adopt all of them. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Next is the discussion and possible vote to continue with the Senior Citizen Tax Work Off Program. This is a program we've adopted for many, many years. Um, it allows seniors to get a credit on their real estate taxes, um, their primary residence real estate tax bill here in Wareham. In other words, they must be residents. Um, and the amount that they would be able to work off would be one thousand two hundred dollars. The state has allowed up to two thousand dollars, but we've held it at twelve hundred dollars for the past couple of years because we believe that that gives more people, more seniors, the opportunity to work off their tax bills. The um, the vetting of the applicants is done by the Council on Aging. And the packet again is in your um, in your packet. Several different departments in the town use these individuals um to help them out with clerical error, uh, clerical work. The clerk's office uses them, I know. Um, the assessor's office does, I'm pretty sure that well, Council on Aging certainly does as well. And so our town departments ask to have volunteers uh work on their behalf. So that's really what the program is about. Um, and we need to, if you so choose, uh reaffirm to continue the program.
Okay, make the motion to go ahead unless there's any discussion, Ron, any questions?
No, I think it's great.
I'm fine, Judy. You're all set?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue that senior work off tax program uh with the amount of one thousand two hundred dollars maximum per student senior that qualifies.
And it's for the year two thousand twenty, calendar year.
Calendar.
Yep.
Second.
Motion made in second and is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. I have no business under the forty-eight hours, and so we will go to the town administrators report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, well, this sad news, uh, Mr. Buckland, our our Director of Planning and Community Development Director has let us uh uh know that he will be retiring. And in true Ken fashion, he'll be retiring on February twenty-ninth. So on the uh, the legal day. But uh, he, his time here has been, it's really been great. He's been a key key cog in a lot of the zoning changes and changes that the, through the planning board, so really appreciate all this hard work. Uh, we, one of the things we're looking at is trying to um go with future replacement more of an economic development director and then having a sub-planning uh director that's a little bit of a lower level so that the planning board can have somebody directly uh associated with them. Uh, I know there's, there's a lot of time that needs to be devoted, so just give me a heads up, what we're doing right now is posting for that planning director position and then the economic director will finish thereafter.
So, gentlemen? Mr. Slavin?
I just want people to know that I, even though sometimes I can be a PIA, which is called, basically stands for pain in the ass. Uh, Mr. Buckland and I have constantly go back and forth with uh multiple grant programs, options, et cetera. I'm gonna miss him tremendously because he's done a great job and I do apologize for overloading him constantly with things that just you can't handle easily, but it's, it's been a huge benefit to the town. And we will really miss him.
Yeah, we really will miss him. He, I don't think that many, many people know exactly how many hats he wears for the town, but he wears them very well. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, and the um, the, the grants ability that you got, it's I was always, I was shocked in the beginning at the number of grants he got and then he became, it was so good at them that if we didn't get one, I was more shocked thereafter.
Yes.
Uh, and this uh this Slavin, I know it sounds like you spoke to Tonight Storm already.
Yes.
Okay, so, and one of the other things is uh, we know that there could be a lot of down trees that with the wind gusts, so the only good news is as we're speaking, it's actually getting warmer outside. So that's part of the reason of the storm, but uh, so even with power outages, we know that uh it'll be into the fifties tomorrow, so we'll, we'll keep our eye on it. And as the storm's passing through, really the greatest impact will be when everybody's getting up tomorrow mornings. If need be, we'll have uh, we'll have availability in town spaces from the multi-service center to the library during, during normal operations tomorrow. Uh, the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities, I still can't really spit that title out yet. That new one, uh, let us know that they have uh approved the funding for, through our CDVG grant for the Wareham Housing Rehabilitation Program and the Redwood Park uh Window Replacement Program, so they have released those funds. So that's really good news. Uh, I'll let you know, I've informed the uh Mass Dot about the two bridges across Elm Street that uh we will not be able to go forward with designs on those since they will conflict with the dam removal that everybody has voted for and is the uh, is the need. I did request if we could have those reallocated towards the bridge that would be over the expanse, uh. I received a reply saying that they would have a discussion about it. Uh, I think if I was shaking the magic eight ball, I'd say outlook not so good. But I couldn't imagine spending the money to replare those bridges only to be taken down within a short period of time. Uh, I just, I think it would be fool-hearted to use the tax dollars in that manner. Uh, the, the next one, the next one's just a little like kind of let you know this every now and again, but just a reminder, since it's a new year that on July tenth, we will be fifteen years away from the three-hundredth anniversary of the incorporation of this community.
Should play a little bit.
Yeah, so it is coming up sooner rather than later. And officially through the, the DRDLS guidelines, uh, ten years out, you're allowed to set up the revolving accounts for the funding of it. But honestly, if you, we want to have the celebrations I think you want to have, we need to start planning over the next few years for those ten years. Because it will go by extremely quickly and uh it's always easier to take the first step now than it is later.
Question for Derek, you want to go ahead and sit with the Historical Society and get them set up to get working on it, since they can raise funds?
Yeah, they can raise funds. I also think that this is uh, this is going to be a true uh town communication.
Absolutely.
So uh, and I think we are able to, to set things up with, through the revolving accounts for it. You can also set some appropriations aside through your your regular levy during that period. And I would absolutely recommend it because this is a uh, it's a tremendous anniversary for, for an amazing town, so.
I would, I would suggest that the uh, what sits and has a, on the agenda in the very near future uh come up with a discussion of how we go ahead and put this in place and get started, because it's ten years, sounds like a long time, it's really not.
Yeah, so that's, I know we're fifteen out, but this is, you start the planning now for those ten years for the the actions. Um, so I appreciate the support on that. The, the last item is uh I'd respectfully request on the next selectman's agenda that we have the flag policy put on there, just to let you know, since uh the town properties come under the uh, the, the town administrator, I have established a flag policy. Uh, but it's usually the Board of Selectmen that should uh, should do that, so I think it should be the board's policy. But in the meanwhile, I have established one that the flags to be flown are the uh, the flags of the United States, the Commonwealth, the town flag, and uh when approved, the prisoner of war, missing in action flags and no others, because those are our, our flag poles are the official communications of the, of the government and they're not uh, you know, they're not for, for speech, if you will.
Thank you. I will put that on the agenda for the twenty-third.
I believe the MMA uh just had a seminar on flag policies. And it's available, we should, we probably should download that, so we have it here, we have that discussion as well.
Yeah, if you want to take a look at it, this is uh, it is based off all their input and has been vetted through an action of another community as well, so.
Yep.
Love to claim the intelligence to have come up with it right off the bat, but it's uh, I'd rather steal the design, so.
Okay, thank you.
Why reinvent the wheel?
Anything else, Mr. Sullivan?
No, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Liaison Initiative Report. Okay, great, thank you. Um, liaison initiative report, board's comments, Mr. Bessie? You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I'll just bring up one thing to the uh, uh, the attention of our wonderful town. Uh, I've gotten a lot of uh, phone calls and messages um, over the last uh, several weeks uh, about taxes. Um, and people asking why they feel like their taxes have been raised so high. Um, and I've kinda tried to explain, um, I think people don't understand the assessments of their properties. Um, and that, um, you know, we're a couple of years behind. Um, and not just us as a town, but just in, in general, the assessments are always a couple of years behind, um, what um, what the market is showing as far as property values, so we're just starting to catch up to those um, higher valued uh, years. Um, so that's why the taxes look like they're high. Our base is the same. Um, but the taxes have increased, obviously, because property values are now showing those increases on the assessments. Um, so it's not that we're uh, sitting here, you know, making extra bucks, uh, because we've changed our tax rates. Uh, it's just that our assessments are catching up to um, what were the good years in, in the housing market, which is still um, still booming uh, to a cent, but that's why um, the tax bills look higher. Um, but they're not from a, from a dollars and cents standpoint as far as the base is concerned, so um, if you have any questions about how assessments work, uh, I know that the assessor's office, you know, they're super busy, but they are definitely willing to answer the questions. Uh, to give you a better understanding, but that is why it looks like your tax bills are higher. Um, it's because we're catching up to um, the values of when the properties were um, a lot higher.
I would add to that, thank you, Mr. Bessie. I would add to you that, that we also collect on behalf of both of the fire districts, water and fire districts.
Correct.
So, those are separate legal entities that we do, in fact, bill, send the bills out for them, and neither one of those entities is bound by proposition two and a half, so if you're unhappy with that portion of your tax bill, then you should go to their annual meetings. I think the last one for the Wareham tax one was sixty-dollar, sixty-eight people showed up, Mr. Slaven, is that correct?
Yeah, that's about right.
Yeah, so, um, thank you, Mr. Bessie. Anything else, Mr. Bessie?
Oh, that's it.
Mr. Slaven?
Uh, just to piggyback on Ron, I was actually had a call, I saw someone at the Y yesterday. A member, and she was complaining about her taxes and how they got up fifty percent. And uh, I asked her to bring her paperwork in, I'd meet her eleven o'clock this morning over at the Y. On my way in, we sat down and uh, unfortunately, instead of looking at the top line, which is the taxes for the uh full year, her two thousand and twenty-three taxes, she was looking at a half-year's bill. And uh, we sat down, went through it, realized that the taxes had gone up about four percent or so because the valuations had gone up. But some people, actually, their overall, their valuation may have gone down. Or the tax rate's gone down a little bit, so it has a decrease, but again, it's very difficult for people to understand. Wareham is allowed to have a max of two and a half percent tax levy increase on the overall town. You know, we can't increase it any more than that. All you do get added in is basically new new property, new development gets added in, that's where you build a little bit. Uh, so you're working in that way, the, the assessments of the property offset, you know, depending how it goes up and down on that way as well. Uh, so it is, at times seems wrong, but there are other people that are, that are happy with what they have. It, it balances out, but it's sometimes it hurts. The uh, trying to think what else there was. Um, I, I think that's really it, cause that more of stuff coming down the pike as we go.
Okay, great, thank you, and I have nothing to add. Um, we will go to the consent agenda, actually, some minutes that need to be approved. From time to time, you'll, you will see that executive session minutes are being released. Um, we look at the booklet every six months or so and review the executive session minutes with town council to make sure that there's no reason to hold them any further. That, which is why there's fourteen of them on the list, but Mr. Slaven, I'll accept a motion on the first two sets of minutes.
Uh, before I do that, Mrs. Slaven came over, scolded me for not mentioning that we went over to the playground over at Shangri-La that was redone with a tremendous amount of input by the municipal maintenance and even more so by the residents there. Uh, if you ever have the chance, please go over and take a look at it. The job they've done, both, both entities has been really tremendous, and what's even nicer is the playground is being kept in probably the best shape I've ever seen any public playground in my whole life. I'm just amazed that how much that community has stepped up with what they've put together altogether, so again, thank you to the Shangri-La area residents. Next, uh, we have approval of minutes for the select board meeting of twelve, twelve twenty-three and twelve nineteen twenty-three.
Is that a motion approved?
The motion.
Motion made to approve, and it's been seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Next, I have executive session minutes to approve and hold, and it's for twelve nineteen twenty-three.
Okay.
Motion made in second to approve and hold. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Mr. Slaven?
Next, item B, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to approve executive session minutes that have been previously approved and held, items one through nineteen as listed in the agenda.
Okay.
So the, it's to approve to release, is that your motion?
Yes.
Thank you, and that's your second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven? And myself, yes, it is so. Next, on the agenda, we have an executive session, so um, I'm going to let the public know that we will be uh, adjourning from the executive session. I would ask for a motion to go into executive session. And then we will take a five-minute recess so that WCTV can clear the room. Uh, Mr. Bowen will remain with us, and Mr. Sullivan will leave the meeting. And Mr. Slaven, Mr. Bessie, and myself, and Mr. Bowen will continue with the meeting after our five-minute recess.
I will make, I will make a motion for Mass General Law thirty A, section twenty-one, reason number two. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel in regard to Derek Sullivan, Town Administrator.
Second.
Motion made in second. The chair declares that it would be a necessity, so may I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We will be going into executive session, it is a necessity. We will take a five-minute recess to seven, no, eight oh three, please. Mr. Sullivan, Noah Sullivan, would you please uh, clear the audience and attendees, please, and we will return. Good night, Mr. Sullivan, thank you, and good night, Wareham. We will be adjourning from the executive session.
Correct.